All the meeting to order, please stand for a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Jill.
Frank Karini.
Here.
Mark Berhalin.
Here.
Kelly Gannier.
She is sick.
Mike Dudzik.
Here.
Cheryl Suniglia.
Here.
Meredith Whitman.
Here.
Brianna Allen Kaiser.
Here.
Paige Stewart.
Cara Meyer.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining our September 22nd meeting. Right to the agenda items. Before I start to, item number four, I'd like to say a comment for the public. As a follow-up to the public comments from September 8th Board of Education meeting, individual comments made to the board members and comments made on social media, the district is unable to comment on a criminal case and/or the outcome of a criminal case as the district is not responsible for prosecuting such cases. Further, as to a former district employee, the district cannot provide any comment whatsoever. Thank you. So, on the agenda item, approval for agenda, I need a motion, please.
Whitman moves to approve the agenda.
That's second.
Uh, I'm sorry. Meredith, you have the floor.
No comment.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. That motion of approval of agenda has been approved. Uh, next on the agenda is thank you and acknowledgements. Anybody have any acknowledgements or thank yous? I just wanted to say, um, you know, look at the personnel, all the people that have signed up and want to join this great team, thank you, and we're really excited you being part of it. And it's really exciting that you're joining our district, so it's awesome, good news. Anybody else, any comments or questions? Number six is public input. We're going to recess a former portion of the meeting to entertain comments or questions on the agenda items. Concerns about an individual student and personnel issues are not appropriate in a public meeting and should be addressed in appropriate administrator for resolutions. Comments deemed to be personal attacks against other persons, whether they are present in a meeting or not, are not appropriate, and we will rule out of order. Uh, we wish to model for youth, community, and sharing ideas about issues with kindness and civility. Also, comments are not, excuse me, are not limited only to agenda items for this, uh, or, excuse me, public comments are limited only to agenda items for this evening's Board of Education meetings. You cannot defer or donate any of your time to other speakers. You are allowed three minutes for comments, two minutes and 30 seconds. I'm going to raise my hand, and you've got 30 seconds to complete. After that, if you go past that, the mic will be shut off, and then I will ask you to sit down or will be escorted. You will be, at the end of time, if a public input is no more than 30 minutes after and begins, and any remaining speakers will be requested to submit their comments to the board in writing or return to the next board meeting. So, right to the public input. Jennifer, you want to come up? Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Nor, and I would like to speak on the agenda number nine C and number nine D. The first one, nine C, is in regards to the naming of the pool. I'm a little bit confused as to why the community would not be asked for their input on this, and I'm hoping that the school board members that are present would not take that initiative to name the pool without input. I would like to see the students have an input in the naming of this pool. But why not make it into a contest? Get the ideas, form a committee, and make a decision from there. Or get the input from the constituents that actually helped vote this pool through. So, I'm asking for the board members to consider this instead of you all making a decision for the rest of the community. In regards to nine D, which I believe is, um, was brought up at the last meeting about behaviors of school board members, what is do's and don'ts, I guess, is something, how we say it. I, I do have a concern about this. I think that we've all seen the social media blast that have been going out, especially by the, our neighboring Cudahy, and what has happened with that. And I'm just wondering, do we have the same reactive to our community teachers, our staff? And are we regulating this? And I also have a concern about if we have this high expectation of what our teachers and staff should not be posting on social media, should we not be concerned about our school board members posting items? I would like to know. Should school board members be held to a higher standard? They are supposed to be leading by example to the staff, to the administration team. At the last meeting, um, this was discussed about the behaviors, but I have not seen the actual itemized list of do's and don'ts of school board members. And I would like to know if that is going to be open to the public. I'm also wanting to know, if you could please add and not vote on this, but do school board members have the authority to go to community events and exercise authority of power when they don't have it instead of going to the proper channels? That is all I have on those two items. Thank you.
Will McIntosh? You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is William McIntosh, and I'm here to talk about the strategic plan. To me, this is not a plan in real sense of the words. However, I feel the need to ask several questions about what I'm reading. Under the strategic plan, a teaching and learning, how does the district ensure that using this tool leads to meaningful changes rather than meeting state expectations for accountability? How do we make sure that focusing on this report card actually helps us improve schools and just isn't about checking boxes? And for STAR 360, the way STAR 360 is used in Oak Creek seems to address the lower-level learners, ELL students and students with disabilities. What I would like to know is, does STAR 360 unintentionally overlook high learners and their need for additional challenges in the classroom? Ready for success, how are these indicators aligned with real-world skills and knowledge students need for various post-secondary pathways, including vocational and career-focused options? Discipline, incidents, and removals. The district is looking for suspension data, looking at suspension data for, but does the raised data include the white students? Disability or other groups are included, and how are we addressing any disparities? What alternatives to suspensions are being used right now? And how are staff being supported to use those instead of exclusion? What kinds of supports are in place to help students who are at risk of being suspended, like mental health, behavioral health, or restorative practices? Financial monitoring, what processes are in place to regularly review and adjust resources allocated to ensure it's effectively supporting academic excellence? Can you share examples where financial planning has led to clear improvements in student outcomes or learning opportunities? Talent acquisition and operations, why does this district refuse to sit down and have discussions with the representatives of the staff? Families survey, what might be, what might cause a drop in favorable ratings for school fit? And what does, what steps are being taken to address it? How are the results shared back with families and schools? And what changes have been made based on previous survey feedback? And facility access, what steps are taken to ensure fair and equitable access to school facilities for all community members and organizations? Now, I've seen at least one last year where somebody rented out that facility, the Pace, and it was a total travesty, which she had to go through down there. And I don't believe she was treated like everybody else when they rented that out. But this is not, this is not a strategic plan. There is no corporation in this country that would put a plan like this on the desk of their CEOs and their Board of Directors and get it accepted. You've got to have, you've got 10 people on this report who make a lot of money, and this plan is not very good. Sorry to say that to you.
Dean Hilbler? Three minutes?
I have a few questions. The first one is actually an accolade. I am very happy to see agenda item number 10C, student representation at board meetings, noting that the students will be permitted an opportunity quarterly to give a report before us. I've asked for that, so I'm really happy to see that. Number two, agenda item number 10D, first reading of school board policy updates. I'm concerned about the numbering has changed for the NEOLIA policies. I don't know if you've noticed. So, on the district website, uh, the series 300 is instructional, and the series 500 is personnel. However, on the report that you all have on the agenda today, personnel is section 3,000, and finances is section 60. Will you have some type of, like, old reference point for those that may be referencing those policy numbers in any documents or any conversations that they're having? So, if you can answer that question in reference to the numbering, I also have a question in reference to the NEOLIA policies that do not have any legal references to them. So, the current policies have a state statutes that should align along with the policy, and NEOLIA has their copyright stamp and the date that they implemented the policy. Also have a question in reference to the codes that are listed at the top of this, of the policies that NEOLIA has. So, in particular, I'm looking at the whistleblower protection policy, and it says code number PO3211. I'm assuming that's something in your computer system that will organize it, but it also has section 3,000 personnel. So, I'm not understanding. There's a policy number, 3211, whistleblower protection. So, there's three numbers identified on each of the NEOLIA policies. I know that sounds confusing, and so I'm just trying to get some clarification on that. And then lastly, on the strategic plan, I'm really concerned that there was no opportunity for the community to have input on what you're going to put together. We would love to see something three to five years out, but also taking consideration the way the Derout study was done. You had the parents' input, you had the students' input, and I think you should really consider doing that for the strategic plan. Thank you.
Laura Grau.
BOE policy 187 states, because the board believes public input is extremely...
It's not on the agenda item.
It is listed under your agendas. Yes, it is. All I'm asking for is that I stood before you two weeks ago to address my concerns. This district mishandled an investigation. I'm disappointed.
Laura, this is not part of the, ma'am. You have to write the board, ma'am. Ma'am. Officers. It's my part. You have to write the board, ma'am. Sorry. Sandy? Apologize, I didn't know I said your last name. You have three minutes, Sandy?
Hi, everyone. I stand before you as a concerned parent. My son was a victim of a sexual attack by an administrator's child. There was a big conflict of interest, and the situation was not resolved to my satisfaction, and my son is still suffering. Someone needs to take accountability here.
Sorry, ma'am. It's not part of the agenda item either. Approval of the consent agenda? I need a motion.
Suniglia moves to approve the consent agenda for the meeting minutes of Board of Education for September 8th, 2025, and the approval for the submitted lists of bills and payrolls and personnel.
Whitman, seconds.
Question, Cheryl, if you have the floor? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. That is approval of consent agenda, item seven. Because that's approved, item eight, we are skipping. There's nothing to be on that. Reconvene former portion of meeting for board discussion and interaction. Action items, increase in aid staffing request, I need a motion.
Whitman moves to recommend the approval of the creation of one six-hour special education aide, three 5.5-hour special education aides, and one 1.5-hour supervisory aide.
Allen Kaiser, seconds.
Meredith, you have the floor?
I hold comment.
Okay, anybody else, discussions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion's approved of the movement of approval of the creation of a one-six-hour special ed aide, three 5.5-hour special ed aides, and a 1.5-hour supervisory aide. Uh, next on the agenda is approval of elementary report card science indicators. I need a motion.
That's like moves to approve the recommended elementary science report card indicators.
Suniglia, seconds.
Discussion, Mike?
No comment.
Anybody else, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. The motion was approved to approve the recommendation elementary science report card indicators. Next on the agenda is the naming of the pool facility. I need a motion.
Suniglia makes a motion to name the new pool facility, the Oak Creek Aquatic Center.
Second.
Whitman, seconds.
Discussion, Cheryl, you have the floor?
Um, I have no comment.
So, the board, any discussions?
I received only one email about naming it the moat. I know, we were all very...
Uh, anybody else?
I will add one more thing. I know there was, um, there was a committee that looked at this, and there was a group of citizens that was on this committee that talked about different things and were involved. And so, it's my understanding that this was the name that they came up with, so, um, I'm comfortable with this.
A question for the students. You like it? Just asking. You guys are on the floor, so you're feet on the ground, so I'm just asking. Thank you. All right, any other questions or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion's passed on the name, motion, new pool facility, Oak Creek Center. Uh, next on the agenda, I need a motion for approval of meetings and operating norms.
Whitman moves to approve the board meeting and operating norms as stated and bulleted above in the document.
That's like seconds.
Meredith, you have the floor?
I, I hold comment.
Anybody else, discussions?
I would like to just make a recommendation that, um, if, I think this is the one where the, I think, it says the board president or the...
Vice president.
Or the vice president will respond to any and all official and public inquiries. Do we want to attach a timeline to that, like, within a certain amount of time?
My response is, A, it's got to make sense, B, it's, um, I think within 72 hours is fair, three days, three business days. But again, it depends on what the request is and what the question is.
Right, and I think at least if there's an initial response, like, if there's time that needs to be, to get information for them, then we can send an initial response. But I think if we can at least have a, within 72 hours or whatever, that they at least get an initial response so that there's some sort of communication started, I think would be, if we could put something like that in there, that would be my recommendation.
Three business days is fine with me.
Okay, so we could add that into there, then?
Yeah, in some other cases, it's already specified in policy.
Correct.
Like, if there's a challenge to a book and a law.
Correct.
And I assume...
Mike, are you finished?
Yeah.
I was just going to say that I assume that Cheryl is speaking of, less about formal complaints and more of the general public messages that we receive.
Emails or things like that.
Does that, Paula, is like, does that bullet point, um, where it says, like, the president or vice president will respond to these, like, does that include, like, the informal emails that we sometimes get from community members?
Dean, it's a gray box, so it depends. If a parent reaches out to you, I'm sorry, a lot of times, certain board members jump on it so quick, right? Um, it depends. Usually, if it's myself, Mark and I have a conversation, and/or Dan and I, and go from there, so. It's hard to blanket statement across the board like that, um, so each one's going to be different. I can't go across the board on that, because every request or email is different, and different requests and different asks and wants. It's a conversation that I have with Dan on a daily basis, um, and then obviously Mark's included on that. Yeah.
I, I want to just time it a little bit. I think the reason for that is, if there's questions that come across either at a superintendent's desk or Frank's desk or mine, sometimes it has to be vetted properly before an answer is given, so that's why a 72 hours probably is a good timeline. And if there's any other board members that have to give input or feel like giving input on a certain question,
to put that in a blanket statement is almost impossible. Any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay.
That's with adding the three business days, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that motion's approved of the board meetings, operating norms as stated, bulleted above. Information items, the seclusion and restraint of report.
Yes, so I'll have Monica Church come on up and share that report with us. Director of Student Services.
Hi, so I'm pleased to report our annual seclusion and restraint data. We have significantly decreased the total number of seclusion and restraint incidences last year in the 24-25 school year. You can see that the total number was decreased by 50, um, and it was a 54.95% decrease. Some things to note are that last year, um, in the 23-24 school year, our partners for students who may attend alternative schools, their seclusion and restraint data was higher. This year, they've significantly decreased that. Another thing to note is that our, our buildings have also decreased in the total number of seclusion and restraint incidences. Any questions?
So, these are all, can you go back to that statement? You said that, so these are all in our buildings, and you, or these all, do these all include...
They include. So, that table there highlights, so elementary, we had 20 incidences of physical restraint. It's okay, um, but you can see the alternatively placed, um, schools had five incidences of physical restraint. Um, and then seclusion, total incidence of seclusion, they had one. Our elementary schools had 25. And then it breaks it down, because we have to report to the state, the total number of students and the total number of students with disabilities, plus the total number of occurrences.
Great job, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Excuse me, Troy, can you shut the door back there, Troy? It's kind of loud. Thank you. Sorry, Monica.
That's okay.
Anybody else got questions for Monica?
Great compliments to your staff. Thank you.
Yeah, they're working hard. Thank you.
Strategic plan presentation, Dan?
Yeah, so we have the team here to go through each section of the strategic plan. Blaze will be putting up slide presentation, which are going to be giving you an overview of the 15-page strategic plan that was put together. So, basically, the Guiding Coalition, Guiding Coalition has spent months in the development of our strategic plan. We have focused on four critical areas. After a lot of discussion, we feel important to meet the needs of all students and staff as well as our community with the community engagement and communications piece, while at the same time, we're looking at providing operational efficiencies of the total organization. In the past, when I looked at what we've had, you know, a big portion of it obviously focused on curriculum instruction, which is, again, extremely important. But we also want to take a look at other parts of the organization that helps support the 6,400 students that we have coming through our doors every day and the 750 staff. So, what you're going to see tonight is the team will be going through, if you want to go to the next one. The team will be going through, uh, each, each of the four areas that we've identified. So, first up will be the teaching and learning team. So, John Krennic and his team is here to go through that and give a summary of their area. And then we have the emotionally healthy schools. So, Andre Bennett and his team will be here to discuss that. The financial steward and operations component, Blaze and Troy will be talking about. And then the community engagement and communications, we have Heather Ryan here. Lindsay could not make it tonight. She didn't feel like coming back from Italy to, to give this report. Otherwise, she would have been here, so. So, I'm going to turn things over to the first group with John Krennic, and they're going to walk us through, you have the link, um, and you have a copy of it in your packet, if you want to refer to that, uh, but we are going to be giving you a high-level overview of the plan. Oh, John? Excuse me, Megan.
Okay, I'm up first. So, for the teaching and learning department, we had four key performance indicators. The first one is statewide accountability. So, that's probably the one you're most familiar with, that's the state report card. So, looking at that, the state report card looks at student achievement, student growth, the target group outcomes, and on-track-to-graduation indicators. So, that metric comes out in the fall, and that really is just aligned to the DPI State Accountability Report Card, and that will reflect both the student success and the equity on the report card.
So, the next key performance indicator is achievement and growth. This looks at our STAR 360 assessments. We're utilizing this metric because it reports out three times a year as a universal screening tool that we have a strong linkage to predicting student performance on the Wisconsin Forward and on the ACT. STAR uses a research-based model to monitor growth and progress throughout the year and tracks how students are responding to intervention and instruction. Students' projected scores in math and reading are personalized to compare that growth to other peers in academically similar situations. The public can look for updated results of this metric in early October, February, and in June.
The next portion is ready for success. By focusing on ready-for-success indicators, we will ensure we are preparing students for the skills, knowledge, and habits needed to thrive in learning and future careers. The metrics that we'll be using are aligned with the Wisconsin Portrait of a Graduate and redefining ready metrics for college and career readiness. And the last one, continuous improvement, we are using our PLC PLT process. Through this, we are, staff are fostering a collaborative environment amongst each other, and will create a culture of shared responsibility, continuous improvement, and collective problem-solving, which ensures all students are learning at high levels. The metric is currently blank, as this is a new method for our district to measure continuous improvement through the self-assessment as a team, and the continuums that are used for the self-assessment are aligned to solution trees continuums.
Before we move on to the next area, does the board have any questions?
I just have a, kind of a nitpicky question under the core area, teaching and learning. It says completion of Algebra I in ninth grade. What about students who would take, like, shouldn't it be, like, by ninth grade? Like, what if you have a student who's taken it early?
In eighth grade?
Yeah. Yeah. Like, wouldn't that mess up your, like, wouldn't this, couldn't that potentially mess up scores? Do you know what I'm asking? Like, it's, it's nitpicky, but it's just, I'm just thinking of my own.
No, it's a good question. It's a great question. The eighth-grade students would be coupled in with those kiddos, because they have to complete it by ninth grade. So they would be accounted for, because they'd be at the next level of math, which would be geometry.
Okay.
Oh, good question.
Very good question. Anybody else?
Moving on to the next section. Emotionally healthy schools.
So, emotionally healthy schools, we have two areas, attendance and then discipline incidences and removals. Absences excused and unexcused are legally tracked and reported for compliance. A student is considered chronically absent when missing 10 or more school days in a school year for any reason. Research shows that students who miss more than nine school days each year are at risk for not graduating from high school. So we're tracking chronic absenteeism and attendance rate to ensure that our students are attending school to the greatest extent appropriate. Then, for discipline incidences and removals. This indicator tracks the removal of students from school for disciplinary reasons through suspension. Schools with higher rates of school suspension have lower academic quality and poor school climate, according to the American Psychological Association in 2006. Schools with higher suspension and expulsion rates have lower outcomes on standardized achievement tests, according to Davis and Jordan in 1994, and Skipper and Rouch in 2006. When we're looking at the discipline incidences and removals, we are utilizing a risk ratio known as relative risk, which takes an exposed group versus an unexposed group, and produces a rate of occurrence for that exposed group.
When a situation like that happens, do you guys create like an action plan?
Are you asking specific to when a student has, has significant amounts of suspension?
Correct, above 10, or 10 or suspension.
For, oh, for attendance?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So we have attendance policies in place, procedures to notify parents when students are approaching that 10-day. And, Andre, do you want to talk a little bit about the attendance?
Yeah, so, you know, what, what we're looking at really with attendance, and the reason we chose this is because as we look through Neola policy and the way in which we are taking attendance, there are some levels of concern of how that's happening across the district. So, as we complete the new policy, there'll be some changes in the way in which we report attendance. So it's gonna be very important that we keep an eye on whether or not that's going to make significant shift in what our attendance looks like, to ensure that we're recording attendance correctly. So, a lot of that is really adherent to what we're going to be doing here, future coming up. So, it's, it's important that we add it on there, because we know there's gonna be some shift in that.
And then, the other hand, obviously, if it keeps going, and keeps going, and we give them multiple, then there's gotta lead to, like, personally, like a pre-expulsion conversation?
There's a number of different, obviously, there's a number of different steps that, that happen from the initial attendance letters to the truancy meetings, the parent meetings, the student meetings, different truancy plans and attendance plans that we create. So from there, there's, you know, there's kind of a step system of what that looks like, and how we are actively working with the family to try to change what that looks like, versus it being more punitive on one end, but we want to ensure that, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why our kid could be missing school. So we want to start out by trying to be as helpful and supportive as we possibly can, before we get to that point.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
And like, when they're, when these, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
When these numbers get listed here, is this, is this gonna be a number that's like at, from the end of the year? Like, or is this an ongoing number? Because I'm, I'm thinking about, especially in the area of attendance, there's a family who decides they're gonna go on vacation, and they take their kid out of school, even though we don't want them to do that. There's some families that choose to do that. They might take him out for 10 days. How does that play into it?
Yeah, so that, what I realize, Cheryl, that that's a lot bigger here than I have any experience with in the past. With, with, for a number of reasons. We have parents who take our kids out of school, and take them back to their home country for up to 30 days or more, and so those are some things that we're looking at, again, that's partly that, that update to the attendance, of how we're going to record that. Each one of our buildings are doing, typically, they're doing something the same, but there's some doing a little different. Some things different in how that, how that looks, so we're working on really solidifying that. So we've developed that policy, now we're gonna kind of develop the attendance committee to come back together, and really take a look at those pieces, because those are significant hiccups when you talk about student attendance, and how, how we are going to work through those things to not have such significant movement in our, in our attendance numbers, but that is a huge piece to this as well.
I think about the child, too, who maybe has chronic illnesses or something, and it, you know, ends up being out for ear infections or whatever, you know, until they can get that. I guess, is there separate columns for certain things?
Yes. Yeah, so that's when we're looking at the way in which we label those absences, whether they're medically excused, parent excused, school excused. So the, the piece that I think we're working through the most is the difference between where there's a school-excused absence typically is what we're going to as a district excuse versus what our parents have the right to excuse, and then what comes after the fact. So, the medically excused, as long as there's documentation there, we want to ensure that we're putting that in medically, because those things are then excused by the state, as long as we have that paperwork that states so. So, that is, there, there are different points to this, yes.
I have a question and a comment. For the absences, does that include things like tardies, or like partially missed days? Like, is that all included in that, in like the word absences?
Correct. So there are ways, and so, so many tardies will turn into a half-day, full-day absence. The same thing with, what was the other one you just said? I'm sorry.
Oh, like, just partial day absences?
Partial day absences, so yes. So, partial day absences are, I think, even more significant at, like, high school and elementary, because a partial day, basically a full day in a sense, but yeah, so partial days are very significant, which is things that we're talking about, and I know, again, I've had some incidences this year where parents are like, "Well, I have the right to take my kid out," and you do. But we also want to parents to understand the impact to instruction and, and learning when your kid is missing those significant chunks of a school day. The same thing goes with our kids in high school, who have different reasons for being gone, or even our middle schoolers who are being pulled for sports early on, and they're leaving at like 1 o'clock, and they're missing chunks of the day. So, there are so many little components to this that we're, we're trying to work through as far as how we're documenting it, and what it looks like across the district for efficacy purposes.
And then the comment I wanted to make is I've actually been following personally, like, attendance rates has been a huge, huge buzzword in, like, school news, and so I'm actually fairly impressed with our chronic absenteeism and attendance rates. I know, even just compared to the rest of the state, much less the rest of the country, I mean, there's schools out there where 70 is a good number. So, I would, I think that, I'm happy, I'm happy that it's on the strategic plan, because obviously, it can improve, but I'm happy that we're already doing such decent work at this, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, most of our schools, attendance rate are in the 90s. So there's no stick to, you know, you don't shake a stick at that. That is very impressive. Obviously, the numbers always get better, just based on what we know, and based on our significant truant students, right? So those kids are potentially going to lead to not just being truant, but then those are typically our kids who are also a part of that dropout rate, or, you know, that non-graduation rate. So we have to just be cognizant of how impactful not being in school could be for our kids across the board.
One of the comments that was made during public comments was about exclusionary tactics and practices and so on. And one thing to understand about the strategic plan, this is just a very high-level overview of a plan that we have going on. There's a lot of things that go into these numbers. There's a lot of work that goes into these numbers. One of the things, maybe either Monica and/or Andre, if you could just touch briefly on some of the practices that we use to work with students, rather than going straight to expulsion or discipline, like, you know, we've talked about restorative practice, threat assessments. Could you just talk briefly about some of those practices that we use as a district?
Yeah, I, I think, to be honest, Oak Creek has a lot more things going on than, I, I know people probably were thinking, and a lot more than some, maybe even my previous districts, but ultimately, the district works hard to keep kids in school. And so, a lot of the things that I've had experience with, that would result in kids being suspended from school, and missing multiple days, or potentially being expelled and removed from school, doesn't always happen. So, a couple instances, and I'll just say something specific to our high school, for instance, like, they use the pre-expulsion process, I think, perfectly, in the way in which it should be used. So there are a lot of incidents that, that would typically have a kid removed for multiple days, or potentially brought to expulsion, which I know you guys don't see a lot of expulsions in the district, and there's a reason for that, and that's because of that pre-expulsion process, where we bring our parents in, we bring our students in, and we walk through the incidents that occur. And then we come up with a plan that the parents are typically extremely happy to abide by, and the students are able to abide by, in order to keep them in our buildings long-term. Some of those things may go through graduation, some may just be for a month or two, but whatever those expectations are, they're put in place, parents sign off on them, students sign off on them. And then we're typically, we move forward, right, as if the incident didn't happen, but understanding that there's expectation for those students moving forward. We do the same thing with students who may have different types of AODA issues, whether that's alcohol, drugs, or, or, for our, for our sake, the biggest issue here in Oak Creek is vaping. All right, and it's probably one of the biggest issues across the country right now in our schools, is vaping. So we use the same, we use an AODA process, AODO. And that process is really very similar to a pre-expulsion process. We bring, except, pre-expulsion comes to DO. The AODA meetings happen at the high school, happen at the schools, we meet with the parents there, meet with the students there. We talk about the reasoning behind the behavior, why, you know, what is going on with vaping. We have a number of partnerships with a number of different mental health programs, and, such as CPA, that we can offer to our parents. We have the opportunity to offer opportunities to our parents related to partnership with Aurora. So there's a number of things that, you know, we're looking at, specifically when we know kids are struggling with their mental health, are struggling with addiction or something like that, that we'll rather support them on that than to remove them from the school for long-term. So yes, those kids may miss a day or two while we set up that meeting, but we're never looking to expel those kids when those types of situations occur. So there's a number of differences. Those are, are two big buckets of things that we are supporting our kids with. We're working, Monica has brought in Dr. Dana and some other folks. Pam, Jessica Dwyer, we brought in, who is a BCBA, and Dr. Dana, who's a licensed therapist to bring in, and we're, we're training our staff in looking at what that looks like for children who are suffering from trauma, children who are struggling with their mental health, children who have different disabilities that may, you know, that, that those behaviors may look as if they're acting out. And how do we support those teachers, and are able to support those students? A lot of that is going through bringing those people into our district, and having them work directly with our staff on a regular basis, not just some one-time events, where these folks are coming in and working directly with our staff throughout the course of the year, and building their skill sets, so that we can keep our kids in our district, in our building, and really minimize the amount of students that we are pushing out to alternative placements, like Richardson and Norris. We want to keep our kids in-house, and I think we're doing a great job in making that happen.
And going back to those AOD meetings, you, you said "we," and then we, I know you talked about DO staff and the principals, but we also have our counselors and social workers involved in that.
That is correct.
And also, if you want to just talk briefly about the psychological associates who are on our campuses? Maybe I'll turn that, have Monica do that?
Yeah, that's actually what I was just going to add to the conversation. For reducing suspension, we utilize our Positive Behavior Interventions and Systems, PBIS, and our new Character Strong Curriculum to address social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. In addition, we also have Clinical Psychologists Association, which is a partner, partnership with that professional organization who brings in licensed therapists and, to do therapy with our students in the school, so families don't need to leave, have their child leave school to attend that therapy session. And so we have within our multi-level systems of support, our response to intervention, ways that students can be identified for those supports, and then provided instruction. We also have ways to address, you know, student conflict, student concerns through, kind of, that, that responsive teaching method, as well as, you know, being very strategic with how we model behaviors to avoid having to have a child suspended.
So as you, I'm sorry, one last thing, I'm sorry, Ms. Allen Kaiser. So, the one thing, you know, you won't see necessarily is the, all of these things we talked about in the strategic, strategic plan. We wanted to just give a high-level overview of things that we want to focus on, knowing that there was a number of things going on underneath that helps support our students, whether it's academically, whether it's through conversations around emotionally, and safe schools and that. So, I just wanted to make the board aware of that, of all the things that we do have going on.
Yeah. So, my question is, first of all, I love this, and I love that you can see the numbers decreasing, right? And that the plan is slowly but surely starting to make its way through the district. Now, I think there is a lot of controversy when it comes to, everything we just talked about is the student, right? And what's going on with them. But I think we get hit a lot with the confidentiality of the victim, right? And so parents come, and they're very frustrated with the results. So when it comes to the strategic plan, is there's portions that you share with the other family that doesn't kind of cross that boundary of confidentiality? As far as, you can't say what happened with this child, but parents also want to know that when kids stay in the schools, their kid is also safe, you know? So where, where's that line?
That's an important conversation to have with that victim and that victim's family, is what supportive measures are going to be put in place for that student. And that's an individual conversation with each, each family and each victim, but that language around supportive measures. What can we do to ensure that your child feels safe, that your child can access and participate in school? And then a plan's created based on that information for that individual.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the emotionally healthy schools that any board members have, before we move on? All right, so, next up, we have financial stewardship and operations, so I'm gonna turn things over to Blaze and to Troy.
All right, so the first one, financial monitoring. I think in your packet, you had, you can kind of see that, that starts with, with regards to the monitoring, the thing that we're gonna talk a little bit later tonight about, the August financial report. So, does the board get monthly financial reports? Are they timely? Are they accurate? Are you getting that information? Or, as far as for ranking for that, it, you know, I put it at like an implemented, and it's updated, but I didn't put it at the top level. You know, that's something I'm looking at. I think we can do better. Right now, that report is very good, but it's Fund 10 and 27. There's a lot more we can report on. And actually, what I'd really like to do in the future is make it more interactive, so you can kind of click and see things differently. But, that takes time, and I don't want to outsource that. I want to do it myself. So I need to find time, make that a priority, and get that done. And, you know, I also want, there's room for growth, I think, in a lot of areas. So that's something that we do really good right now. I think we can do better. But that's where, always keep an eye to the future on how we can grow. Audit report, I mean, we have an audit every year. That one's kind of like cut and dry, you know? I mean, do you have an unmodified audit, meaning a clean audit? Or, do you have an audit with findings that are severe, and, and you have adjustments that end up having notices being sent out to authorities, or to the state, just saying that there's severe modifications to their grants, or something to that effect? So, we have an unmodified opinion, unqualified, which is a good thing. It means it's a clean audit. And we've maintained a clean audit for, for quite a long time. So we have a good relationship with our auditors, and I think that's something to be proud of, and, and something that not every district, quite frankly, has, as you can probably see in the media, with some districts that are having challenges in that area. Another one in financial monitoring is our fund balance. That's one that's pretty, a pretty hot topic in a lot of districts. Where are they with their fund balance? We're sitting at, when, and, and what I would consider, when you look at fund balances, I would take out the self-funding piece. The self-funding is designated for the health plan. So, when you take that out, we're at about 28 and a half percent. So, that's a, that's a healthy fund balance, that's not low, it's not high. Um, so I would put that, you know, in the, that light blue category. I wouldn't say we're royal blue, but I would say we're light blue. Um, I would say if we get over 35% fund balance, then I would say we're, we'd be royal blue. We are successfully avoiding cash flow borrowing, which is really good, because when you do that, you keep resources in the classroom. The minute you start cash flow borrowing to make payroll, now you're introducing interest expenses, which is taking money out of the classroom and putting it into essentially bonds and banks to pay interest. Um, the last one in that area is bond rating. We, uh, so this qualifier is a double A three, we are a double A two, so we're actually a notch above that. And we're, we're actually in a really good place. Um, we could go higher, I, the next one up would be double A one, and then triple A. Um, I believe there's only two school districts in the entire state that are triple A. So, but we could still make double A one. In fact, the last bond rating call we were on, we were darned close to getting there. So, we're, uh, in that one, we're light blue, um, so there is room to become royal blue, but I mean, we're, we're in a really good spot. Um, so, on the financial monitoring side, I think we're in a really good place. Financial planning, um, that one, one thing we do, uh, each year, usually it's in February, is that long-term maintenance plan at Fund 46 C I P Plan. So, do we have that? We definitely have that, we like clockwork, we do that every spring, early or late winter. Um, have that plan created, have the board approve it, and have it executed. So, we have that, we set funds aside, we are being responsible maintaining our capital plants and the infrastructure of the district. I think that's important, because if you don't do that, what you end up doing is you have a lot of deferred maintenance. When you have a lot of deferred maintenance, you end up going out to referendum, and you end up having to do a lot of things that are boiler-related, chiller-related, uh, asphalt roofs, those types of things. So, we're doing a lot of that in our normal operating budget through that C I P transfer. So, having that plan and having that done each year, I think, is an important piece. So, having it part of the strategic plan, make sure that we do it each year and it, and that it's done well. Um, budget calendar, again, this is kind of textbook financial planning, making sure that we have a budget calendar in place and that we have all the benchmarks in there. If you recall, budget calendar usually comes out in January, February, um, it's on the board agenda, and it'll outline, we actually beefed it up a little bit to also include a number of the state reports that we do, just because we had some neighbors to the north that weren't getting their reports in, and we just wanted to make sure the board knew of the number of reports that we do each month, uh, to whether it be the state, the federal government, or other entities. So, having that plan documented and implemented, uh, is important. Um, then in financial planning, maintaining enrollment projections and planning, uh, to enable us to be able to see where we're going uh, as far as the resources we need to maintain the class sizes that we have. That one I did put as going into the green, so that just means it's implemented, but we need some attention. And I kind of spoke to that, uh, probably about four or five meetings ago, maybe, about having a more in-depth analysis of our enrollment and projections, uh, and bringing in, uh, an outside consultant for that, that has a lot of expertise in that area, that's M D Roffers. So, we're actually have that on the docket to be working through that in late fall, early winter. So, that's going to be one that, that'll move, uh, the shield to a different color in the future. Um, but that's really getting to know, and the enrollment is key. And we just want to make sure we have a good handle on the enrollment, because that's going to impact a lot of the other planning, whether it be the facilities or the staffing. And then, um, other one that was on there was around staffing plan, just having a, a good staffing plan and aligning, um, sure our staffing plan is aligned with our goals and we have collaboration with the principals. That's something that Troy does a fantastic job on, making sure that our principals are in the know that we have a good pulse on what they're experiencing in their buildings, so that they can come to senior leaders and we can have good conversations around what are the student needs and that we can respond to that. That's actually, quite frankly, something you saw early tonight. Um, you saw additions in aid staffing, that's driven by student needs. And those student needs, we can anticipate some needs, but we don't really know until the doors open that first day of school. And then we start to get to know these kids, and then we get, get to see, all right, these are new kids to us. What, what are they presenting with and what resources do we currently have in place? Which ones do we need to expand on? So, I think having that open line of communication with principals is going to be key, having that well.
Great, and then, uh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I was wondering, do we, where would we include, um, our debt in any of these? Or would we want a separate category for that? So, if, like, people could see where we are and how we're decreasing it over time?
Um, you know, that could be in two different spots. Uh, one, that could be added into the timely budget monitoring through monthly reporting. That can be one very easily added, it's just a matter of structuring that in. The other place that could be added is, or it could be at least reviewed, is in that bond rating piece. Because a lot of times that bond rating is going to take into consideration the debt load of the district.
Yeah, it'd just be nice to just have it somewhere that it could be looked at or viewed.
It's, it's also going to show up in your audit report as well.
But I guess I'm looking at it, is, is this something we're going to be putting on our website at some point in time? Or available for people to look at?
On the audit report, it does show like the last three years.
Right.
It, it's always in there. So, I mean, be on the website, I don't know, that's up to obviously, you know, if people could put it on the website, that'd be great, but yeah.
Yeah, audit, yeah, audit report is on the website, it's just a matter of digging through ninety-some pages to find that one.
Right, I just, you know, I like, I like graphs, I like stuff like this, and it'd be nice if it was something that could be easily seen, so people could see.
Yeah, I think.
I get that question a lot in the public, it's like, how much debt do we have? And how is it going down? And it's something that you could direct somebody to and they could see it.
Yeah, yeah, I get your point, yeah. If it's on the website, you can say page five, six, and seven, it shows it.
Yep.
And the honesty, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, so the bond rating, we don't borrow, obviously, fund balance. That increases our bond rating, which also reduces the interest rate, we have a little referendum, right? So, it's beneficial for the, for the district, for the whole. So, if we're borrowing, usually our rates are going to be a little bit higher, because our bond rating is lower, so.
Yep, we're going to be looked at a little less stable.
Does the board have any other questions on the financial monitoring or planning before we toss it over to Troy? Okay, there you go, Troy's up to talk about talent acquisition and retention?
Um, two of the things that we're focusing on, two, are two of the things that we changed this year. We moved from, uh, one provider to run our Health and Wellness Center to Ascension. So, we are going to focus on what is the ROI. I think we're going to have a really good, um, a more realistic version of an ROI for, um, as Ascension's running it. Ascension's just very, very clear, they say every time you go to doc, a general practitioner doctor, how much money do you save versus going to Aurora or Freiter, something like that. So, that's going to be ROI, ROI. There will be more, but it's going to be a very solid number that we can look at and, and everybody could figure out. The second piece is our employees asked us to change the health risk assessment that we do and how we do it. So, we've done that, and we really want, we want to monitor, one, did it improve our, um, overall participation? Kind of doubt it, we're very high, we're like ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent participation rate. Um, but we're going to get some feedback from our Workforce Excellence Committee, um, that's coming up, and see what they have to say about, was this better? Do you like it better the old way?
What was the change?
We changed from doing, um, onsite, probably about five of them, high school, like district office, various schools where people come in, get a blood draw, do basic biometrics, complete online health risk assessment, meaning answer questions about yourself. Um, to a process where they said, hey, we all go to a doctor anyway, which isn't necessarily true, but, um, they say, they said, we get a blood draw from our doctor, why are we doing this twice? So, they had a good point. Part of our switch to Ascension allowed us to do all this, because they have Epic, which everybody has Epic, which is a healthcare monitoring system that now allows things to be loaded into their, their file, whether it's Cynthia seeing them at our Health and Wellness Center or their own personal doc. So, that's the change, it's now you have, literally, they had fourteen months to get the blood draw done, and fill out the health risk assessment, this coming year, they'll have twelve months.
You have a goal for ROI?
Um, so, I, I won't know that until I see how, we have a year with Ascension to see how they're reporting it. Um, if you remember, you're going to see a report, um, coming up this year later as we move through the year regarding the Health and Wellness Center, it's an annual report I do for you. The, the first company we hired, they, I thought they did a really nice job with ROI. The second company that bought them, I think, didn't do as good of a job. And the third company that bought them, if you listen to them, we could eliminate our whole healthcare budget just based on the savings we're going to get from this clinic, which we know isn't true. So, um, I think from previous reports, you're going to see a smaller number, but it's going to be a very real number. So, I, I don't have a good gauge on that, because it's, it's really apples, oranges, and lemons over the last three years. Um, as you know, coming up next month, you're going to see a retention report on our, um, professional educators. Pretty good year again, uh, is what you're going to see. What I really want to do, I put, um, I put this year's in green as a area to improve. Well, um, I want to focus more on AIDS, um, and our retention of AIDS. It's very difficult, the place, the school districts who have fewer retention efforts than we do generally provide healthcare, generally offer seven, eight hours. So, you know, for us, that's about a two million dollar proposition, which we don't have. So, but I want to figure out a way. Sonia has been working with our aides and doing a great job of getting aides hired, on-boarded, to the principals to interview. Um, and that's been her focus, just an amazing job she's done with that. So, we're almost fully staffed, we had one person, finally, we, we had one person who was supposed to start today, decided not to, otherwise, we would have been fully staffed. And then, the, the last one is compensation overall. As you know, um, I've provided some things in, in different formats to you about how we do in terms of compensation money-wise regarding our professional educators. Think how I'm going to do that, go, moving forward, is put together something completely and totally separate that focuses on where are we in terms of healthcare, where are we in terms of, um, of compensation? Where are we in terms of retirement benefits, sick leave, things like that? It's just one of those things I haven't done, but I think would be another good add for all of you to be able to see.
Any questions of Troy in that, in those specific areas that he just spoke about?
No, thank you for looking at the aid thing, because I know we've seen a revolving door with that. And I know that's not your fault, that's just.
It's an uphill battle.
Yeah, it is, so thank you for looking at that.
All right, and then moving on to the last component in, uh, this area, the financial, uh, the compliance and risk management?
Yeah, this one kind of overlaps both of our areas, um, just reporting to the federal and state government. We have, obviously, a lot of reporting that gets done, um, and then making sure that we're compliant, have everything in on time, whether it be the Department of Ed, Department of Agriculture with food service, um, Medicaid, Medicare reporting and billing, the IRS and Department of Public Instruction. So, are those reports in, are they done timely? Um, are there any variances from those due dates? Um, the next one, employee onboarding?
Um, and I, I would say part of the aid retention would, everybody sitting over here did a very nice job of putting on training for our new aides this year. So, we've increased our training days from one to two, we're now up to three full days of training for aides. So, again, small things we're trying to do, um, to increase our retention.
Then we have a reporting to other agencies that are more local, um, the City of Oak Creek, City of Franklin, and then, um, effective implementation of risk management practices. Um, this is kind of an annual thing, sometimes a little more often, depending on what it is, uh, which risk management practice we're trying to implement. But looking at our property liability, workers' compensation, pretty much the district lines of insurance, and then, uh, making sure that we're managing those risks and having the proper insurance in place to mitigate or transfer the risk to the insurance carriers.
So, before we close out the financial stewardship and operations, is there any other additional comments or questions from the board?
Um, my question for you, Troy, sorry, I'm, I'm going back one page, but for the aides, have we ever thought about, like, contracting with another school, um, so that they're getting more hours? You know what I mean? Like, we use them for four hours, they go to the next school, get four hours. They're, they're making that, you know, up for the, the financial loss, which is why a lot of times we use them. And I know it's the benefits as well, but have we ever thought about something in that category or that area?
We've tried it with some teachers that, like, hard-to-fill, long-term subs, um, foreign language, for example. Eh, hasn't really worked. Um, we have not tried that with aides. I don't know if it would or it wouldn't, I, I'm hesitant to give a name to another school district.
Understandable.
Other questions? Thanks, Brian. All right, thank you.
All right, and then moving on to the last category, we'll bring up, uh, Heather Ryan to talk about community engagement and communications. Heather is also going to give, if I'm correct, Heather, you're going to give a little OCR overview as well as part of your presentation this evening?
I think we were going to do the OCR overview at a different time.
Okay, okay, all right, my mistake.
So, the family engagement, this is, um, an area that Lindsay would be responsible for. Our family engagement scores are directly from the family survey conducted each spring. Uh, the survey gathers feedback in the areas of school climate and school fit. In twenty twenty-five, the schools, districts, excuse me, the district score for school fit was fifty-six percent favorable, and his school climate was sixty-two percent favorable. Under communications, keeping all stakeholders informed and engaged with Oak Creek Franklin Public Schools is a top priority. To accomplish this, the district uses a wide range of communication tools tailored to different audiences. The score for communications is comprised of metrics from various digital communication tools, including the board update, email open rate, the social media follower, followers and engagement, and website views. Within Oak Creek Community Ed and Rec, program participation is one indicator of program success and meeting community needs. Overall, program participation increased ten percent from twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, and from twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, childcare and development, including school days out and Camp O C, realized a twenty-eight percent increase. The district is committed, and in number four for facility access, the district is committed to providing community facility access, whether through designated events and programs or through community facility rentals. Our community accessed school district spaces by reserving or renting five thousand six hundred and fifty-three hours in the P A C and all other reservable district spaces. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five community facility rentals for in-district nonprofit groups was up six point two percent over twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and the P A C had rental growth of twenty-six percent twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, for those facility access, we're looking at specific rental or reservable spaces and hours.
Have I seen a year, year and a half, the pool being included in that?
The pool being included in that, underneath, actually, it's included on our world for Oak Creek Rec under program participation right now. So, people who are in lessons or who are participating in our adaptive swim programs or, um, our club swim are included in those participation programs. And it'll just increase. Questions?
Questions the board has, Heather?
What we inherited from the city and.
Continue to grow.
Yeah.
In a lot of our areas, especially even with our student.
Yeah, took it to a different level.
Well done.
Thank you.
So uh, one of the, so a couple of comments then moving forward. You, we will be bringing back to the board periodically throughout the year, updates to these. It may not necessarily be um, all the updates at, at the same time because there's information that comes out at different points of the year. Like for example, as I look at Danny, we have him, you know, uh, test results that are embargoed and so on that we can't necessarily bring to the public. So that might come out at a different time than say something that Heather's reporting out and so on. But it will all be encompassed as part of the strategic plan as the report out in that, as we move forward. So uh, so like I said, we'll, uh, we'll be sharing updates uh, periodically throughout the course of the year. And that's where we're at right now.
All right, um, student representative at board meetings, bylaw 0141.1.
Well, yes, so I will take that. I had the stink pleasure of having a conversation with our two lovely student representatives, Paige and Kara. Uh, we had a great discussion. Um, first of all, I can't thank them enough for not only what they do at their school, but you know, it's, we were trying to get them involved more with, you know, with the board and so on. And you know, where, where is their role when it comes to that? So we had a great discussion. We met about a week and a half ago. And one of the things that, we talked about a number of things, but the outcome of this meeting uh, is that they are going to update the board quarterly. I have the dates listed there uh, on a variety of topics, but not uh, but not limited, uh, including but not limited to school events, working with recognizing community groups, student life with a focus on student social and emotional wellbeing, uh, highlighting smaller clubs, sports, et cetera. So um, so I will meet with them about a week or so prior to the board meeting. Um, as they will put their report together, we'll sit down and discuss the focus that they, uh, that they want to look at and discussing with the board. And they'll be reporting out then to you, like I said, quarterly. So is there anything in particular that the two of you want to mention? Why don't you pull the mic down? Can you pull the mic, can you pull the mic down? There you go. No worries.
I don't think your mic is on, but.
But, but it, it won't be recorded then. That's why, then the public can't hear you when it's recorded.
Too late.
So. We have to start all over again, no.
You're fine.
No, you did, you did well, you did well.
That's awesome. You're doing a great job and uh, a lot of times we will reference you as board members, right? Like we'll ask your opinion, uh, like earlier. Um, but I know it's a lot of work. I know you have a lot on your plate already, so we appreciate your hard work coming to these board members, what board means, and Dan.
Yeah, just to piggyback, uh, homecoming parade is Wednesday, six o'clock, we're praying for good weather.
Yep.
And then the powder puff game after that, and then the assembly is Friday, it starts around 20 to 2. Yeah. And the dance is Saturday. Yep, so fun week with all the different dress up days and so on.
Awesome.
So thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you. All right, first reading of school board policy updates, section 3000 and section 6000.
So I will, uh, I'll start it out and I'll, I'll send it off to Mike and then Meredith and Cheryl on that. So we had a great discussion um, with regards to policies 3000 and 6000. I know there was a comment made during public comments about some confusion over the numbering. Uh, as we're working with Neola, uh, we are looking at uh, a little bit of the renumbering with the sections. Um, but it all makes sense once the final uh, policy draft will be done as we're keeping up to date throughout the course of this semester. And we will ultimately, the board will ultimately approve uh, the policy manual in January of 2026. So there's still some, uh, some work ahead with the policies and the numbering and so on. So um, so we will, we will definitely get there. So these uh, two areas that we focused on um, were the personnel section, which is now 3000, and the finance section, which is now 6000, which is consistent um, across the state, particularly with the about 80, 85% of the Neola school districts that uh, that work through these policies and that. Um, so we will, I'm going to toss it over to Mike and can you put up the spreadsheet uh, that we worked off of? That should be linked in there. Um, the Neola policy questions from committee, board committee members? So that we can see that. Um, there you go, it's nice and big. Uh, we're going to blow it up. So uh, just a reminder as we go through this, um, as the team leads us through this, and again, big thank you to Mike, Meredith and Cheryl for their work on this. 38 minutes, good job group that we went through this. Um, and they did their homework, especially in such, in, in such a short timeline because of uh, getting it back from Neola. So what you're going to see there are the uh, policy numbers that the board had questions or comments about, the board policy review committee. You will see um, a response either, you'll see Dan's response, but it's kind of a team response that would involve uh, Troy and Blaze and myself. You will see Richard Zimman uh, from Neola. He is our rep that helps support us through this. And then you will see if there's any changes. And then what Jill will do tonight, you won't see it on this form because she has the uh, the actual editing form, is she will put any notes, uh, any additional notes from this night's board meeting into this that if there's something that the board would like to uh, consider uh, going down the road. Again, this is the first reading and then the final policy review will be in January of 2026. So I'll turn things over to Mike.
Yeah, um, first of all, how this works and, and Dan went through it a little bit. His administration will go through what Neola has in terms of the policies. And they will make any updates um, or any changes that they think to make sure that it conforms with what we want to do. Um, shortly after that, they do their part of it. It comes to uh, the review committee, which is me and Cheryl and Meredith. And we will go through even before that, it's presented to us and we go through it. And as you see here on the, on the forum, we would go and indicate uh, what kind of questions or comments that we have as far as going through. Subsequent to that, we have a policy review meeting for our committee. Going through and Dan's uh, involved with that as we go through and we uh, and we address what those questions are. I get responses from Dan, Troy, Blaze, anybody from administration that may have a comment with regard to that. And also Neola in terms of what their response is to the questions that we've brought up after we go through at our policy review meeting. Um, this is where we are going forward and this is where we think that we should be. That's what we're presenting here in terms of the first meeting for the board. Did I say it right?
Yes, you did. You did well, did well.
Just a question about um, I got a quick up question.
Okay.
Board staff communication, what do you mean by that? You're talking about like from?
Yeah, I, I don't know 3112 here.
You have the policies on paper copy in your packet if you wanted to.
I'm just reading what I'm seeing here though.
Reference.
Yeah. So the chain of command, it's just start from the superintendent going down as people are like changing that? Is that what this, that means or what?
I don't think we were looking to change it. I think there was just some questions on the verbiage that we had. And so like my question was, do we need to, to tighten up some of the verbiage on the policy? Like is there, you know, sometimes staff or teachers will reach out to a board member with a question or what if it means, what if a board member goes seeking out information to a staff member? So it was more just cleaning up some of the verbiage, which um.
I just think that we got the board members, again, we just got to stick to the plan, especially on staff and including people in the community, they have to go by the command. So start with the principal and going up. They shouldn't go right to a board member because I'm going to say the same thing, you have to start with the principal. But I don't think that's consistent and that has to be, so. The other thing is what's informal discussions are subject to open meetings and open record laws? Mike, can you explain that to me?
Um.
What you guys are looking at?
It was basically in terms of where we had informal discussions. And 3112.01 is just a variation of uh, 3.11 or 3112, which is right above it. And uh, while we were, while we were looking there, we decided to keep 311201, which just basically goes through the lines of responsibility as stated. And formal.
I think sometimes, um, sorry, Mike, if I'm stepping on your toes, but I, I think that sometimes, you know, the three of us are kind of tasked with reading this in a bubble and we don't always understand. So I think Mike's question more was there is what exactly was the definition of informal? And how does that play into open? So sometimes it's just us not getting a full understanding of what this policy means as opposed to actually having like an issue with the policy.
Then they, Neola clarified that and Dan clarified it. So it was like, it was a no issue with us. Once we got information back from Neola and Dan, we were like, okay, we're fine. You know, we had no issue with it, so.
Yeah, I mean, it details staff interactions with individual board members. If you go through that in terms of what, what is and isn't acceptable with regard to chain.
Thank you, Mike. Interesting, but.
Basically all the same, are there any other questions? Do you want to go through every one, one by one? Because there's a lot there. I mean, we can.
I think overall, we didn't have a lot of changes to anything. Like the last time we met, we had two or three things to bring up to the board to kind of get the full board input where this time I think because not, none of us are financial gurus or HR reps, we just had questions on verbiage. And it, um, I think the biggest questions were just coming up where Dan really reiterated following chain of command when dealing with communications from outside people. And then I think the only change that we had was to staff gift amounts. Um, that was the one I felt passionately about.
Yeah.
Um, just that um, Neola wanted it to be $25 and I pushed for 50 because there's no, there's not technically a state statute on it. And both Franklin and MPS, and I also believe St. Francis all have 50, so.
Anything on section 6000 with finances that uh, quickly obviously looked at though, but anything that Mike stands out?
Oh, I don't think so, most of it was uh. Uh, go back, yeah.
There?
Yeah, the only change uh.
On 52.
Right, 61 and 52 where there was a question with regard to the, the language in the Neola was that.
Oh, yeah.
And the question was, and that is actually.
Right.
When we talked about it last week. So we want to change it to something generic in case that would change in the future. And it was changed, the, the verbiage was changed to our debt collection contractor, whoever that may be.
I got a question, is that for student fees?
Yeah, that'll be for student fees, it'll be for lunch fees, pretty much any outstanding.
Are we going to include that, can't graduate until, or receive a diploma until they pay it? We talked about that last year.
That doesn't.
Well, you can put it in a policy.
Well, that's. And that's, that's a, that's a hard thing. I mean, that, because that, there's, it's hard, I think to me, that's a hard line to say you can't.
I get lunches, but I'm talking about fees like light fees and book fees and stuff like that.
Well, that's why I think it has to be, but I think that's why it has to be done on an individual basis. And I think that's kind of up to maybe.
Disagree.
The principal.
No, I think that that's a valid topic.
I mean, when you're going to go to 100,000, 200,000, I mean, and it gets out of line, it gets out of hand. And so there's got to be a limit to it.
That's, that's where.
Food and lunches and breakfast, I get that. I'm talking like library fees, book fees, Chromebook damages, book, you know, there's got to be some kind of.
How much of, I mean, how often is, is that a big problem Blaze?
Standing fees.
Yeah.
You have a paramount.
I know, if you look at the report, look at it.
Now, but what I think is going to help is bringing in a debt collector. So that's where I got.
I agree.
Kurt was ahead of the horse here. Because that's where Waukesha County actually has a 66 agreement that I want to get on board with, which we'll bring to the school board at a future meeting.
Okay.
Um, before Neola's actually even adopted fully. Um, but what they do is they essentially go out and collect that debt.
Okay.
And they'll actually pass the fee along to the people that collect the debt. We have the option to absorb the fee as well. At that point, but I mean, what's nice is they have tax intercepts in ways that they collect that we don't. Take them to small places.
Yeah, my thing thing is, you got to think of the intangibles as hardware, Chromebook, for example. And then all the, incorporate all the staff time and so there's wages included.
So um, Blaze finished with a point that I, that I, that we can get them to recoup the fees. But in the theory, if we do threaten lack of graduation, wouldn't that in theory take care of some of the issues before they would get to collections?
It could, I don't know if we leave, I don't know what, we'd have to look at the legalities of what we can withhold and what we can't. That's the only thing, I'm not positive.
So yeah, so I guess what I would suggest to the board is that uh, we'll go back, take a look at this. Oh, I'm sorry, Brianna.
That's okay.
Um, that uh, Blaze and I can go back, take a look at this. Uh, I can also take a look at, and see if this, that, what you're describing Frank is in any Neola language anywhere else that we may have not got to yet. Um, and we can, I can bring that back to the board, let the board know.
Brianna?
Um, I will say that uh, my cousin, a family member just graduated from MPS and they did tell him he cannot graduate until his fees were due and paid. And they held him to that. So he ended up paying last minute, uh, but they were very serious. You don't get your graduation tickets or your diploma until you pay your fees. And I do, I thought I read in here that Neola said, like the state statute is if they are like free lunch, we also can't hold them to registration fees or books.
Correct.
I thought everyone else could still hold to that standard. But I don't think it's unreasonable. Again, they go, he goes, he went, excuse me, to graduate guys. Um, but he went to MPS, um, and they, they held them to it.
Mike?
Uh, Brianna, that's good information, but I was thinking, uh, Dan, we should probably talk with our legal team by not if we have any of these, if we hold their feet to the.
Yeah, they'd be part of that discussion as well.
All right. Board members just look this over because obviously it's going to be an action item. Yeah, thank you for all the hard work on this. All right, next on the agenda, board vision versus board evaluation discussion, bylaw 174.5. The only thing is, is one of our board members not here, so I don't know if you guys want to table it for next one or?
Yeah, I would.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I would probably table it because quite frankly, I like what Kelly wrote here. I really did. When we talked about it in the policy meeting, um, in terms. When we talked about it in the policy meeting in terms of evaluation and self-evaluation, and I'm not in favor of that, I think, for reasons that I've talked about before. I think visionary, as Meredith suggested, is good, and I like what Kelly wrote, because everything is we envision in terms of where do we want to be, you know, X amount of years, five years or whatever. And I like what she addressed, what she addressed there, but I would suggest we table it, you know, until she comes. No, it's just information.
It's just conversation.
It's an informational item, so it can just be putted to the next one. I'm fine with it. I think that that's respectful, since not everyone, including myself, did reply, did answer. So I do feel like if we do have, I think that can be for all conversations, anytime we have a member who feels strongly about something, if they're not able to be at a meeting, to consider holding it.
Yep. I agree, like, for evaluations and things, yes.
Mark?
I'm fine.
Absolutely.
Cheryl?
Mm-hmm.
Mike?
Yes.
Will table this?
So if I hear what the board's saying, then this item will get tabled as an information item, and we'll move it to the October, or board agenda? It's the 13th. You want the first meeting in October? Okay, thank you. So Jill, can you make that change then? Okay, so we will put that on the, as an information item at the first board meeting in October.
All right. Blaze, you're up with the August financial report.
All right. So August, the second most boring month of the year when it comes to the school finance. Not a lot happening in August, because a lot is still running through the balance sheet accounts. Even, actually, the first teacher payroll, I believe, was September 5th, so we did have a few teachers, obviously, back for a few days there, but the first payroll didn't actually go out until September 5th. So not a lot of activity in salaries and benefits. On other expenditure areas, pretty much, I think we had our first payment to Rightway, the deposit for transportation was paid out. So again, not a lot of activity going on in August. Outside of that, on the revenue side, not a lot of revenues coming in in August. The biggest thing, I think, is the beginning of the student fees being paid, just because school's starting, those are coming in. Annual check-in, I think, starts mid, I want to say mid-July, so those, those fees are starting to get paid. Outside of that, interest revenue, interest did stay stable for August, 4.36%. Believe that was four months in a row. I'm, I'm thinking we're done with that. We're going to start seeing that interest rate fall. I think the Fed just cut the rates by quarter percent, so I think we'll see the effects of that. We'll see a little bit of a decline in earnings in the future. Outside of that, everything else, again, rather boring month overall, but things are picking up and have picked up in September, so we'll see a lot more activity. One thing, just to show you the impact of having a teacher payroll in August, if you go back to 2324, and you can look at the salary activity in 2324 compared to 2526, year-to-date activity, you can see there's over a million dollar difference between the activity this year compared to back in 2324. That's solely just based on when payrolls fall. So outside of that, the only big thing that happens in August every year now is we do that transfer to Fund 46. That transfer is done every August so that we have continuity, so when we look at reports, you don't see, you know, things that look out of whack. And that transfer was done in August, but based on the work that was done last February when the board made the motion to approve the CIP amount. So ahead.
All right. Review upcoming school board meetings?
So I was right before, October 13th is the next board meeting. So it was going to be an action, but we'll move it as to an information item, the board visioning versus board self-evaluation discussion. We will have the 2025-2026 pupil count, revenue limit review, and budget adoption process. We'll have a school improvement plan spotlight. So as a reminder to the board, for the remaining board meetings for the rest of the, this semester through December, you will have, be hearing presentations from two schools at each board meeting to give their spotlights with a focus on their school improvement planning process and the work that they're doing towards their measures of their state report card. So you will have that. I look forward to those. And then Blaze will be here with a donation report, and I'm excited. We'll also be bringing then the business honor roll awards, the Wasby Business Honor Roll Awards. We had five businesses last year that we recognized. We got another five this year, and hopefully all those businesses will be in attendance. We'll be able to recognize them for their support and what they provide our school district. The John Krennic will be here for the 2026-27 high school course updates, and then the elementary literacy report card indicators. So those are the information items right now. We have no action items, but that could change. October 27th, action items, we'll approve budget adjustments for the 2025-26 fiscal year, including tax levy. We will certify the 2025-26 fiscal year tax levy to the city of Oak Creek. We will certify the 2025-26 fiscal year tax levy, tax levy to the city of Franklin. You'll have the approval of the elementary literacy report card indicators, approval of the 2026-27 high school course updates, and then information items. You will have, we're looking forward to this, recognition of Caliopi Morgan, who is our distinguished young woman of Wisconsin. You, if you were at our kickoff, you heard her speak as well as Paige. Both did wonderful. Our 2026-27 calendar proposal, that's tentative. Report on retention of professional educators, as Troy had mentioned earlier in his updates. We will have the third round now of our Neola, Neola policy work that we're doing around section 2000 programming and section 4000, health and safety. So once we get that completed, we will only have two more rounds of this, and then that will take us to January, which will do the full approval of that policy manual. You'll hear school improvement plan spotlights from Carrollton and Deerfield Elementary's, and then Blaze will be back with our September budget report.
Thanks, Dan. One shout-out, October 11th, Paul Craft and Vendor Fair, the special ed at the NGC's gym and cafeteria from, obviously, 9:00 to 3:00, so if you get in attendance, helps benefit the Oak Creek special ed staff and students, which is exciting, so, and it's good food. I do need a motion to adjourn.
Senator Nigley moves to adjourn.
Whitman seconds.
Shirley got the floor.
No comment.
Anybody else comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you, everyone.